I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So at this time, before we move on, I want to just take a moment to share a little bit of information. We, many of you may know, lost a student this week at MSB, Diabre Williams, she was a sophomore, and had a severe asthma attack. And so this has been a really tough week for many, especially the family, our family over at MSB and the MSB community. You know, anytime you lose a person and a child is certainly a devastating experience. So Diabre and his family, Diabre's net this family, I just want to make sure that we just take an opportunity to honor his life and respect. You know, we, so the arrangements will be Monday, and so we've been reaching out to the family. Many of the staff members want to go, and so we're going to be supporting the school so that teachers and students who want to attend his service can do that. So I'd like to, at this time, take an opportunity to have a moment of silence for his life. If you'll join me in that, please. Thank you very much, and if you happen to know the family, I just encourage you to, you know, keep them your thoughts and prayers, and if you don't personally, reach out and just be some support for them. Thank you.
Adoption of agenda for regular meetings under provisions of the Public Meetings Law of the State of Missouri, the Board must adopt by roll call vote an agenda that includes a timed place intensive agenda for the meeting. A copy of the notice and agenda for this meeting was posted on Monday, November 6, 2017, at the Administration Center, 1005 Waterford Drive, Floris, Missouri. At the same time, copies of the notice and agenda were mailed to major, to all major radio and television stations, to three newspapers, to all municipalities, schools in the district, and posted on the district website. Do you hear a motion to adopt the agenda?
Yes.
Motion's been made and seconded. Secretary, please call.
Mr. Ebert.
Aye.
Please, Wanda.
Aye.
Please, Halligan.
Aye.
Does the Secretary hold aye? Dr. Graves?
Aye.
And Mr. Shubal.
Aye.
Dr. Hazel?
Yes.
Will the McClure student place his second in National Essay Contest?
Good evening. At this time, I'd like to invite Mariah Ruff, up to the front with Dr. Davis, McClure Senior. Mariah Ruff, if you'd like to come up. Thank you. Demonstrated her excellent writing ability and placed second in the Iota Phi Lambda Sorority Incorporated Alpha Zeta Chapters Local American Education Week National Essay Contest. Mariah will be recognized at the Apple for the Teacher Awards Luncheon on November 18th. Congratulations, Mariah. And Mr. Gerald, if you'd like to join us too, her principal's here. Her mom is here with us to see me. Yes. And Mr. Ford, come on, please. And then I know Ms. Tidbo helped her with some editing and getting the essay to the final format, so it takes a team, and it's great when we have talented young writers in our midst. So congratulations, Mariah.
So the next recognition we have is from McClure South Berkeley Educator Received Apple of the Teacher Award. Is it, do you have a?
Good evening. So to piggyback, each year, the Iota Phi Lambda Sorority Alpha Zeta Chapter presents its prestigious Apple for the Teacher Award. Recipients have met the qualification as an outstanding educator. McClure South Berkeley Science Teacher Albert Harold has been selected as the 2017 Honor Reed. Mr. Harold will be recognized at the luncheon on November 18th at the Airport Marriott. Mr. Harold with, excuse me, Mr. Harold's work with students extends beyond the classroom as he guides and mentors students in and out of the school community. Congratulations, Albert Harold.
He isn't here with us this evening, but I just want to say a word, you know, I'm often in schools, and I wish I could be in everybody's class more, but I've been in his class a couple times, more than a couple times, actually. But he does an amazing job with students at MSB, our students there, and he also does a lot of mentoring. In fact, this past half, one of the last half-days, we had our PD Day, he took a group of students camping with some other mentor teachers at the school. So he just does a really phenomenal job at just making sure he puts his hands around and supporting as many kids as he can at MSB. Let's give him another one.
This portion of the meeting is allocated to show a short video, about six and a half minutes, from the Missouri School Board Association to provide a report of current activities and events that may be of interest to board members and the community.
Hi, everybody, and welcome to the MSBA Board Report for the month of November. I'm Stone Phillips, and thanks for the opportunity to share.
Stone, that's quite enough.
Thanks very much.
Thank you, thank you.
Hello, everyone, and welcome to the MSBA Board Report for the month of November. We thank you for the opportunity to share some news and information during a few minutes of your board meeting. We begin with a look at the 2017 MSBA Annual Conference. More than 1,200 school board members and administrators from school districts throughout the state attended this year's annual conference held last month. The conference featured more than 130 breakout sessions on a wide range of topics designed to improve the leadership skills of board members and administrators. General Session Speaker Steve Constantino, the author of several books on family engagement, challenged those at the conference to involve all families in their children's education. He said, "That can be accomplished only after earning their trust." And you can't demand trust. You can't legislate trust. You can't write policy your way to trust. The only way that you can get to trust that I know of is to earn it. My work is to build the capacity of schools to accept and value the fact that some of the best teachers we have are not on our payroll, and if we can harness that, great things will happen. Another general session speaker was former NBC and ABC News reporter and anchor Stone Phillips, a graduate of Parkway West High School in St. Louis County. You saw him earlier as he attempted to anchor the opening of this program. He remembered a high school English teacher who taught him not just to write, but also to think critically.
You know, she had a favorite phrase. It was the uncomfortable middle. The uncomfortable middle. That's where she wanted us to be in our thinking. No more black and white, simplistic, childlike thinking. We were no longer kids. She wanted to expand our minds and have us embrace complexity, look for truth and the answers to her essay questions in the rich, beautiful gray areas of human understanding.
The MSBA presented Phillips with its outstanding Missouri Public School Graduate Award following his remarks. Annual Conference attendees also had the opportunity to hear from Natalie Hammond, the only adult survivor of the Sandy Hook tragedy that occurred in December of 2012. She shared her story of resilience in the aftermath of that elementary school shooting. She said it's critical that school leaders establish strong relationships before an incident occurs.
So having that communication, having that relationship where you know your law enforcement, oftentimes by first name, and they know you, they know the procedure, they know your safety plan, they're able to come in and do lockdowns with you during a given school day. Someone yesterday said, "You do the lockdowns while your kids are there?" I said, "Absolutely. Why would I not?" They have to know how to do it as well. And the cops come in and they do it just like they would normally do. They knock on the door, they identify themselves, they open up the door. Nice job, and then they commend them. Again, we're talking three to 10-year-olds in my building, so they are little people. So we talk to them about nice job, way to be quiet. Okay, you'll listen for the announcement when Mrs. Hammond gets on and lets you know that you're done, but that's part of the process, and it's a relationship that we've built together.
Governor Eric Brytens has made his fourth appointment to the eight-member State Board of Education. The latest appointment is Tim Sumners of Joplin, who has worked as a church pastor and chaplain. The appointment comes following a statement by former appointee Melissa Gellner of Springfield, who says her appointment was withdrawn by the governor's office after she refused to vote immediately to remove current Commissioner of Education Margie Van Deven and replace her with a candidate favored by the governor. Two new members of the State Board of Education say they were not pressured by the governor's office to fire Van Deven. Eddie Justice of Poplar Bluff and Doug Russell of Lebanon made those comments during the annual dialogue with the State Board of Education at the recent annual conference. All four new appointees to the State Board of Education are subject to Senate confirmation when the Senate reconvenes in January. A highlight of this year's annual conference was the Student Showcase, where students from 13 school districts were on hand to present and discuss innovative programs in their school districts, such as a robotics program from McDonald County, an augmented reality demonstration from Columbia, and a woodshop and furniture design program from Rala. The MSBA Delegate Assembly met during the annual conference and approved the association's new advocacy positions document that consolidates three previous documents that contained MSBA position statements on issues related to public education. This new document will provide the basis for MSBA's advocacy efforts during the 2018 session of the Missouri General Assembly as well as on the federal level. That's it for this month's edition of the MSBA Board Report. Thanks for allowing us to have some time at your board meeting, and so long from Columbia.
This portion of the meeting is allocated for the board to provide an update of current activities and events in the district that may be of special interest to board members and the community. So first up will be Mr. Ebert.
I'll try to be sure. Well, hello, everyone. I have the financial update here. The auditors are in our district this month reviewing procedures, grant compliance and district financial information. They've been working with various departments throughout the district, and so far, the audit's going very well. The Transportation Department, a great development opportunity this past month. Jen and Drive, and how is it? I spoke with the drivers about positive behavior techniques for students and gave them guidance on how to support good behavior. Fire chief from Kirkwood Fire District spoke to them about the safety and how to handle emergencies. Motivation, old speaker discussed how to communicate positively with students and staff. Overall, the drivers had a great training and felt like they learned a lot. Yeah, I've heard a lot about that, actually, the aftermath of that, so that was an awesome event. And on to our cafeteria, the SFE staff and district administrators presented the November Cut Above the Rest Award to our cafe staff at Commons Lane Elementary. They earned the award for exceeding the standards of food safety, meal prep, kitchen cleanliness, and overall positive attitudes. We appreciate their hard work and dedication to our students, staff, and district. And that's all I have.
All right. Good evening. I have the talent management update for tonight. We have many exciting things going on in the district. The first is the Grow Your Own Teacher Initiative. So the district had its first meeting involving administration and teachers to discuss the Grow Your Own Initiative on October 30th. The next meeting will involve a planning meeting between the UMSL College of Education and the district's Grow Your Own Teachers Steering Committee on November 13th here in the Stack Development Building. Also happening, McClure High School will be becoming the newest studio school in the district, beginning in the spring of 2018. The studio school model is done in partnership with UMSL and involves pre-service teachers spending two semesters in a studio school. This approach allows for a deeper developmental experience for the practicum students and also allows for certain students in their second practicum session to work as a full-time permanent substitute teacher. The practicum model will be a key feature of our Grow Your Own partnership with UMSL College of Education. Lastly, we have a professional development day coming up on November 27th. Teachers will be engaging and training around closed reading and text-dependent questioning in their content areas, and that is all. Thank you.
I'll start with the Technology Department. We partnered with Parkway to the fact that they sold us some laptop and Chromebook carts for less than $100 each, and they're like new and in very good shape, and we saved about $38,000 and now have carts that can go throughout the schools, so that's wonderful. There has been 5,715 service requests overall so far this year, and they did a survey on satisfaction, and they got 90.8% that was very satisfied, and then for a total of 97% overall satisfaction. So it sounds like our technology department's doing an awesome job and that our customers, our schools are thinking they are, so I want to give them a round of applause. As far as Terry and his crew in Facilities Department, they have had a flooring project at the Newstein School, and they're working on the second and third floors, and as always, Terry went under budget, and that's always an exciting thing with the carpeting of those two floors. The early ed moves have all been completed, and we're doing a bottle-filter drinking fountains that our plumbing department themselves are doing the work on, and that's another plus for that department. And then we got $900 rebate from American Missouri for our light bulbs, so that's positive. They're very busy renovating, or not renovating, they're very busy winterizing all of the schools and getting them ready for the fall, and making sure all the drainage and coverage and equipment are prepared for the cold winter that we're going to have. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
I have the stakeholders and community engagement. The district is actively working to build community, engage stakeholders in a variety of meaningful ways. We've had a busy month around the district. The weather turned cold for the Little Creek homecoming, but we still had a great turnout, and folks enjoyed the music by the Ferguson Strings Attached Student Guitar Group. Yesterday, Little Creek also hosted a grand opening of the Low Ropes Course. This event was attended by district elementary students, local visionaries, and the Low Ropes Course will be a great team-building tool for student, staff, and the community. Several schools across the district have hosted or will be hosting a veterans' event in the next few days. On the academy front, Airport Elementary hosted a literary fair, and McClure is hoping a college fair tomorrow. Also, the Ferguson Middle School Mock Trial Team will be competing tomorrow evening at 6:45 at the Ferguson Municipal Court. This Saturday, November 11, from 9:00 to 1:00, Robinwood Elementary on Derhaguee will be having a craft fair. And of course, we're all looking forward to participating in the Ferguson Northern Lights Parade, and this is the Sunday after Thanksgiving, and that will start at 5:30. And remember, the district's website that we have, the furblord.org, is a location to find all information for stakeholders, including links to many other resources, including the parent portal, menus, staff directories, and much more. And these are just some of the ways the Ferguson Floris and School District is building connections with stakeholders for the benefit of all our students. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. My portion is student achievement. Block scheduling continues to be a strong focus for our district this year. Our main goal is to establish a schedule that provides students with adequate time needed to master the content. Dr. Wanda Brown of Equal Opportunity Schools led a successful meeting with our district AP teachers targeted to support their work. As we continue to enroll more students district-wide, we recognize the need to support our AP teachers and students in creating images of success. Our goal is for the students and teachers to be enrolled in AP to receive an AB grade in addition to passing the AP assessment. Dr. Crowley? Can you please stand for a moment? Dr. Crowley was recognized at the Equal Opportunity Schools National Symposium for completely closing the enrollment gap at McClure North High School for AP courses for the 17, 18 school year. Can we give him a hand? Thank you. Positive feedback from schools about the format of the last district PD Day has allowed each school to individualize the work needing to tighten up their powerful practice and PBI initiatives at the building level. And that's all my report for this week.
So as you can see, Dr. Thurman is not here. She is regular with the weather, so she had asked me to do her report, which is under category decorum, but I'm actually going to punt a little bit and give it to Mr. Beals, because I know he was working with Dr. Thurman on that, and she was talking about the professional development that the teachers and staff currently went through, so if you want to give an update on that for us?
Just a quick update. On October 19, the entire district is engaged in professional development surrounding PBIS and specific praise, and it was really a great opportunity for the entire district to really get involved in that particular initiative, specific praise. Under specific praise, there are just a lot of initiatives that teachers can do in terms of getting strategies to help students be successful in class. So that was all the work that we did during October 19, the professional PD.
Thank you very much. So as Ms. Harge talked about, the mock trial that's going to be taking place tomorrow night, it is great, it's a wonderful experience, and I would encourage you, if you have the time, to go and watch it. I do not know who the judges are. Do you have any idea, Ms. Harge? I know the last time they had a couple, I mean, it was a good coalition, three outstanding judges, I think one was a federal appeals court judge or something, but it is really neat to see the kids interact with this, and it's a wonderful learning experience, so I would encourage you to go. Ms. Harge also talked about the Northern Lights, so if you have a school group, a dance group, just want to have fun, it's a great time to get out into the community and kick off the holidays or after Thanksgiving with the Northern Lights Parade. December 3rd is going to be the annual Ferguson Karen League fundraiser Christmas house tour. Jessica, is your house on it this year? No? Not this year? Next year. And I think Dr. Davis's house will be on it next year, too. Okay, I'll get back. But it is a lot of fun. Tickets are 12 bucks. They usually have half a dozen houses tour. They really decorate very nicely. People learn a little bit of history, especially on the older houses that are out there, so. And all the money does stay local to help people with utility bills, food, things like that. And that will be on December the 3rd. To all of our veterans, I'm one, yay, thank you very much. There is a, Florisens having their annual Veterans Day Parade, which will be Sunday the 12th, so hopefully we'll see you out there for that.
Could we get our veterans to stand and ready? Anybody else out there?
With that being said, make sure you take advantage of all the free food on Friday. There are lots. It starts from morning until nighttime.
Get all your nails.
All of them, plus snacks, all day, and good parking spots. Dr. Graves had something to add.
I forgot to say, Ready by 21 and the St. Louis County Children's Service Fund is hosting an event to highlight the current work on the school-to-prison pipeline and to engage attendees in creating a set of regional next steps. This event has been planned and coordinated with representatives from the juvenile justice system, education, mental health partners, and other foundations. The cost of the event, registration fee, is $20, and it's going to be at Beyond Housing Headquarters, November 16th, from 8:30 to 4:00 p.m.
And at this time, I want Lori from FFNA to come forward to give us an update on what's happening with the association.
Well, really, our big thing right now, we're kind of stuck in a move, so we've lost our office and had to move a few blocks, so that's been a hectic thing. But really, I just wanted to address everyone and say I've succumbed to the board's peer pressure and are moving back onto the agenda, and we've kind of decided that this is a great opportunity for myself to serve as a conduit from the association to share with the board some of the celebrations and maybe concerns that members have. So I just wanted to say thank you again for the opportunity, and I look forward to sharing with you at future board meetings.
Thank you.
Welcome back.
All righty, pass it off. It's my turn. So I'll be brief this time. I do want to take an opportunity though to say thank you to all the veterans. I was going to do that last week, but you said my thunder. It's asked you all to stand, but really, thank you for all of the service that you've given to our country. My wife's dad, my father-in-law is Vietnam dead, and so whenever we're with him on Veterans Day, we always get some good food as well, especially at Denny's. My son loves pancakes, so he always gets full. But yeah, thank you so much for your service, and I just wanted to say that now. Just a couple of things that I wanted to acknowledge as we continue with the meeting, and that is, so I've met over the last week and a half with several advisory groups. In fact, the most recent group I've been able to, yesterday, with teachers, in this room, met with administrators, with parents, with students. We'll continue to do that. A lot of the conversation has been around sort of two items, right, that I think are really important to acknowledge at this point, and just, you know, briefly talk about them. And I call them the bookends, when we think about our school district and the direction we're going in. The two bookends that we have been really focusing our attention on, and especially as we prepare to give the board some more thoughts around redistricting, resizing, is early education, early ed, and high schools. And both of those bookends, I think, are critically important in order to really get our district shored up for the next 20 to 50 years as we move forward. Early ed, because we feel strongly that our four-year-old, our pre-K students, but our three-year-olds as well, in fact, all the way to parents, teachers, and students who are in utero, and how we help educate parents more about parenting, et cetera, we really believe strongly in child development. And so some of the recommendations that we'll be bringing forward will include that thinking, because I think it's critical that we get kids early before they get into kindergarten and it's time to teach them those other kinds of skills. We've got to teach students how to develop as young people, how to share and get along and have fun and play. Those are critical skills that sometimes we, you know, don't think about how important they are until they get in school, and then they have some challenges. We've had a number of incidences that have happened with students just melting down because of that lack of preparation sometimes, and so we're going to be working hard to include that thinking in the direction going forward, which could look like some really solid research-based early child development programs that will support what's going on in our early ed program all the way through elementary school and then on to high school. The other part is the other end, right? Like, once we get students ready, then what does it look like? Like, once we get students ready, then what does it look like to them going on for life? And I can tell you this, and I won't even get into it, because I know I'll start, you know, getting really, really passionate about this part, is that we have got to redesign the way we do high schools, period, right? Like, and I said it before, but I'll keep saying, folks, if we're to keep up with, not only keep up with, but get our students a fighting chance, not just at the middle class, but opportunities, period, we have got to do high schools differently, right? And we showed a couple of videos to our advisory groups, and we lay out sort of the notion of the industrial age back in the early century, nineteen oh six, when Carnegie units were built out for the industrial age, to now. And now we are in an information age, a technology age, where you have at your fingertips access to so much information. And when we take all of that and compare it to where the United States is compared to other countries, or where Furblord is compared to other school districts around this country, we've got a lot of work to do, and we feel really strong about the direction we're going in. So early education and high school redesign are two bookend critical components that we feel if we do those well, all the middle will be shored up pretty strongly. So just keep that in your mind as we continue to move forward. And finally, with high school redesign, we, one of the things we've been talking about is block scheduling. We've done some form of block scheduling in our middle schools. We've been engaging our high schools. We're going to be moving really intentionally over the next couple of weeks and months engaging our high school folk. We'll be taking a group of people to look at a couple of schools in the state of Missouri that has block scheduling to give teachers, our teachers and our stakeholder groups, an opportunity to engage in and with folks who are already doing block scheduling, to get some of those questions answered and to feel good about, you know, getting answers to those questions and making a really informed decision about what we do here, what we do here in Furblord. Finally, I said finally before, but really finally this time, you know, is we've been pushing reading, but let's keep doing that. You know, we have the two billion word challenge, and I met with principals, and I said to them, you know, we are, I want to put that front center, you know, where our kids and our reading initiative, where are we with them using accelerated readers, a way to gauge them actually getting it? Funny story, so I love battle books, and so we just grabbed a book. My wife taught reading before she was a counselor, so we got a book we're reading now. My son, my wife, and I all finished reading the book, a book we bought, an eight-dollar book, Bud, Not Buddy, it's on the battle book list. And my son is trying to beat me finishing the book. So I told him last night, I'm on chapter eight, and we got the book up until Saturday. Well, I read two more chapters last night, and so he passed by me. So the night when I get home, I got to finish at least four or five more chapters. But it's a really good book, because he identifies in the book with the character in some ways. It's really interesting. Just getting children motivated about reading and motivated them about what you read and how it applies to life, I think that's really critical. And we want that in every home and every community, in our community. So that is my report, and I'll stop there. Thank you.
So the board allocates this portion of the meeting to allow stakeholders the opportunity to comment on both agenda items and non-agenda items at the start of each board meeting. Prior to the public comment period, participants are asked to fill out a comment card with their name, address, phone number, email address, and topic to be addressed, and will be allowed up to three minutes to speak. Members of the audience who wish to speak to the board are requested to speak from the podium. Please identify yourselves, and in keeping with district policies four zero five four, four zero five nine, and personnel law should refrain from making negative comments that are personally identifiable. While the board will not directly respond to speakers during the public comment period, the board president, Josiah, may make clarified remarks at the end of the comment session to correct any misstatement of facts. So currently I only have one card, and it's from Mr. Doug Jackson. He's going to speak to us regarding the flooring project at the new STEAM administration building.
Actually, I had a couple of things.
We did, yes.
Yeah. So I'm a, my name is Doug Jackson. I am a parent of three students in the Ferguson-Florist School District, one at McCord and two at the STEAM Academy. I've endeavored to try to attend more of these meetings to try to be, you know, understanding what's going on and, you know, with kids coming up through the ranks to try to understand the direction of what Dr. Davis is doing and exceptionally happy with the direction that the district has taken over over the last year or so. But one thing that stood out to me is this forum with public comment. At the last meeting, something came to mind as we were talking about bus routes, but there wasn't an opportunity afforded for anyone to speak about that. You know, some of the knowledge in the district doesn't reside necessarily within this room or the paid staff. And, you know, to have that opportunity to have public comment later in the meeting when there are opportunities to comment on the things that have been talked about, you know, give us an opportunity to, you know, use that knowledge of other folks in the classroom room. Also, I found it difficult, I did reach out to the president's school board a few months back to understand kind of the cadence of the meetings. It's difficult to know when meetings happen. This meeting is regular, special meetings are not, and they're always difficult to kind of, you know, run down and figure out when those are. The one thing that I get from the STEAM Academy that I've never gotten from any of the districts, or none of the schools that my children have gone to, is Dr. Reese reaches out and attempts to pull parents in to engage them in participating in their child's education. Something in this forum as well, reaching out to parents to encourage them to come, their parents and students, to come to engage them in this process as well as their school process, or the things that go on at their school. Also, for those that can't attend, because obviously there's, you know, folks working evenings and things like that, I noticed on the website that the videos from the meetings hadn't been posted since July, and certainly folks would like to be able to see those and know that they're there. I didn't realize they were there. It took a little digging to find that they were there. Minutes from the meeting, going back to, haven't been posted since September. So again, you know, if folks want to be involved and want to, you know, but can't attend, you know, having that opportunity to look at past meetings is important as well. My comment, oh, well, I'm running out of time, sorry. I will say, as I walk away, the flooring thing at STEAM, I hope that in addition to the second floor, because that cement floor is really echoey and loud.
And also regards to reaching out to the board at any time, and I always encourage that, I do receive emails, but I always encourage everybody to email everybody. I'm the board president, but I don't have any more power than anybody else in this room or at this table. We all have the same vote, and I think it's really important that we all are on the same page regards to any issue. So when you do contact the board, I do encourage you to send it to everybody. Thank you very much. Next one, Declaration of Candidacy. The three-year terms of Ferguson-Florist School Board members, Dr. Courtney Graves and Mr. Scott Ebert, will expire in April of 2018. Declarations of candidacy may be picked up at the office of the superintendent, 1005 Waterford Drive, Florist, Missouri, which is here. Under Missouri law, the first day to file as a candidate is Tuesday, December the twelfth, 2017, at eight a.m., and filing closes at five p.m. on Tuesday, January sixteenth, 2018. All other filings will occur between the hours of seven-thirty a.m. and four o'clock p.m. on days when the district is open. School district offices will be closed on Friday, December the twenty-second, 2017, through Friday, January fifth, 2018. The annual election for the Board of Education is Tuesday, April the third, 2018. And a person who wishes to file for candidacy for the Board of Education must be a citizen of the United States, at least twenty-four years old, a resident taxpayer of the school district, a resident of the state of Missouri for at least one year. In addition, the candidate must follow these procedures, file a declaration of candidacy, and then line up for filing pursuant to district policy four zero one three. So I will let you know, we will have a board meeting on the twenty-ninth of November. Typically, we try to schedule two board meetings, the second and the fourth Wednesday, being the fourth Wednesday is the day, the night before Thanksgiving. It will be now on the twenty-ninth. Those meetings are typically cleanup days, but one item we will be discussing, and we will be this policy four zero one three. We did change it last year, regards to, we went to a lottery style. My conversations with the board, we all felt that it was a one-time thing, so we want to readdress this. It may stay as a lottery, or it may go back to the way it was before, where the first person files and then stays, stands in line. But that'll be coming up on the twenty-ninth of November, so. That's it. Consent agenda. Madam Secretary, would you please read the disbursements?
Payable teacher, non-teacher, seven million, nine hundred thirty-six thousand, seven hundred thirty-six, thirty-nine. The operation disbursement is two men, seven hundred thirty thousand, eighty-seven, sixty-four, making a total of ten men, six hundred sixty-six thousand, eight twenty-four, oh three.
You have a motion to accept the consent agenda.
Motion.
Motion made by Ms. Hudson, seconded by Dr. Graves. All in favor of the consent agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, or none, motion passed. We're going to talk about the early childhood, special education, special school district agreement. So I have Tiffany Bass and Cynthia.
Hi, good evening, members of the board and Dr. Davis. I'm here today to ask for approval of consent for the agreement for early childhood special ed and special school district. But I just wanted to give you a little background information on it a little bit more. For a variety of reasons, children that receive early childhood special education may not live within their homeschool districts. They may attend daycares, you know, in our district and the special school district. And so special school district and Ferguson-Florist have agreed to provide services for those children that are within their districts. And so that's a part of that agreement. So for example, if a child whose home district is in Riverview or Parkway, they attend a daycare in our district, Ferguson-Florist has agreed to provide special education services for their students and vice versa. So that is the make-up of our agreement. So I wanted to make sure that I explained that to you all. Any questions?
Do you have anybody else that wants to speak before? Do we have a motion to accept the early childhood special education agreement?
Motion seconded.
Motion made by Ms. Hudson, seconded by Mrs. Ponder. I will say, this wasn't part of the consent agenda, but I asked for it to be pulled out. Because, you know, I serve on this SSD governing council, you know, I'm able to participate in those meetings, and honestly, I often feel that SSD short-changes our school district regards to services. Now, probably every school district may feel that way, but I care about mine. And so is this agreement the standard agreement that we do always and nothing changes?
It is. There's no cost to the district, and we call it like a reciprocal agreement, kind of a gentleman's agreement. And so basically, you know, they call and say, can you provide services for a student in our daycare? And we have the staff and the space to do it. We're able to do that. That child becomes on our caseload, so therefore we are reimbursed for that child, so there's no cost involved in that. There's on occasions when there's special services that we may need to utilize, if there's a bus, you know, a child needs a lift or something like that, and their bus does not accommodate it for that, we may reach out to the school district for that. Other than that, there's no cost.
Because I know for a longest time that the SSD sat on, what is it, like a forty-plus percent reserve, ridiculous amount of money. And where we have, in our school district, sometimes probably a greater need than a lot of other school districts in the region, and I have friends who participated in my own childhood, early childhood, but I have friends who are going beyond, and I know you're just dealing with your own childhood portion of it. And I know the other agreement comes later, we'll talk about that, but I just, you know, I just want to make sure that you're at least hearing from me that SSD needs to step up. And I know when they brought the new CFO in, when I was at the meeting, she was making a pledge, you know, that she even felt the reserves that SSD was holding on to should be going back into the classrooms and really into the students and providing those services. So I'm really hoping that is a commitment that SSD is going to continue to make, and that we're going to see, you know, increased services, not only just to our school district, even though I'd like to see most of them here throughout the St. Louis County, so.
What does the outreach look like to the neighboring childcare facilities that are in our district in regards to how are they able to identify a child? Like, what do we do in that process?
We have screeners that are there holding out the child's program, which are out into the daycares consistently, and they're looking in their screen if there's any concerns from there, and that starts kind of an evaluation process. So we're throughout the district, we service. As far as early childhood special ed, we service a numerous, numerous amount of early childcare programs in the district, so that's something we do want to keep.
So I was on that committee for years, and I actually spoke to Superintendent Moehn and having a son with special needs. Now, this is me talking as a father here. Everything was great in elementary school. It was a complete failure in middle school, so bad I had to take my son out. The money situation is almost implorable. I mean, when you're holding on to that kind of money, when we got kids in need everywhere that have major needs. Now, I know that you're just the messenger. I am so serious about this, that I talked to Dr. Davis. If we did not have to pay, our taxpayers did not have to pay special school district anyway, I would have made my mission to bring it in-house. I do not believe that my son was unique in this. So all I knew when I took him out of this district, really based on the special school district failure that I saw as a father, is I knew that wasn't working. So that's the only thing I had to go on. Special school district, it wasn't working. Didn't know that anything, any other door, you know, or avenue I'd take him on would make a difference, but, you know, I had to go elsewhere. Well, we did go elsewhere, and in one year, one year, and you remember the phone call? I was in tears on the phone with my new superintendent that did not know me. In one year, my son made three grade levels progress in his reading. So it can be done, and I almost hate delivering this message to you. It's nothing that I haven't said to Don Moehn. And I know, I understand that these are large entities that take a long time to change, but I am a father of a son that was scared to death whether or not he'd even be able to go to high school. And last week, he had a major role in his school's play. And he's reading on his grade level with the help of technology, which was never used by SSD. My son was given, and I don't mean to keep going on, but this is important stuff. My son and my wife were given, and I had, just like that, here you go, good luck, never was used in the classroom, ever. And at some point, and this is just me maybe saying, but at some point, these kids need to move on beyond, beyond what a traditional student would need. Now, with the help of technology, my son's able to write essays and everything else. And I just wanted to publicly say this, only because if nobody says anything, nobody will change anything. And I'll stop rambling, but I, other than to say, it's extremely sad to me that my son is the one success story. There are hundreds of kids, thousands of kids that need this help. And Rob, what were those reserves last we heard? Forty-five, fifty percent?
Yeah, I haven't been to the meetings, but I don't.
My gosh.
At the time, it was over the 40%.
You know, so I really, really hope things change down there, I really do. Because our kids desperately need that. You know, I've made a mission of mine, if there's any way I can ever provide for other kids, I want to do it, because this is, this is something that I know can be done. You've even said you know it can be done.
So, yeah.
So, help me out here.
I will, I'm happy to. That's what you pay me for, right? So, a couple of things, though, I want to make sure we're clear on, because there are two big issues, right? And one is, this may be overall experience with SSD and your child having an IEP, and then what they're proposing tonight, which is ECSE services, which supports students with special needs, right? Especially the early students, right? So this, this actual MOU is for specialized support, or students who may be vision or hearing impaired. And so that's what they're going to ask, they're asking tonight for, is that the board approves that contract with SSD to provide those particular services. I say that because it's our teachers who are teaching. And Ms. Wise is the leader of the ECSE program, so our teachers are doing that work. And then SSD is providing a special support because of students with additional needs, right? So that's what this is for. The broader part, though, when you think about SSD altogether, is, so I can tell you that I personally have sat with Don Bohannon, who is 100% supportive. In fact, we had lunch one day and talked a good bit of time, myself, him, Dr. Carla Otto, and Dr. Tony Clinton. And Dr. Clinton has been out with the personal matters, but she, as well as Don, because she's the special school district director for our district. And we specifically talked about, here's an issue, standard-based IEPs, right? Because it is not good enough for, you know, us to sort of think about students who have a special need, and at the end, we're going to give them a state exam, but they haven't been prepared for that kind of work, because the standard is here, but the teaching is here, right? And so we have to make sure we're aligning that, because a student with an IEP, essentially what it says is, you know, you have a need for some additional support to meet the standard, right? Not that the standard is lowered because you have that need. The issue is pushing here. So, you know, they've supported us and are supporting us, particularly Johnson-Wybach, that they are going to be funding a reading program for students who are struggling with reading. So I say all that to say that SSD has a lot of money, but they also have some good leadership that's been supported, the work that we're trying to get done in third floor. And I would argue that they're doing some similar things in other places, but I have to be concerned about third floor. But they have been, Don has been at the table, he's not here, so, you know, I didn't know the conversation would go this way, but I'm happy to stand and tell you, I'm going to tell you the truth, and the truth is that he has, he has been there. And I want to continue to keep that relationship, because I think he and the SSD staff have been tremendous at, you know, galvanizing, we think they have to galvanize themselves around the students and the need of each individual child. And that's, and that's not, it's hard, because you know yourself, that sounds good in a broad perspective, but what about the individual needs of each child? And that's where, you know, the rubber meets the rubber, and we can get on the ground and figure out where those, you know, where those needs are, like your experience yourself.
Well, and I guess I'm glad you pointed that out. I don't necessarily want to throw Don under the bus, because when I talked to him, I think he'd had the job just six months. But my, my reasoning for really being, everything I said tonight, he's heard. My wife and I actually, actually sat with him. So, it was to put the bug in his ear and hopefully, you know, work with you and other districts on really change. Like, like Dr. Davis says, it takes time, and I understand that. And I'm happy if, if you're happy, you know, the way it's going. How's that? But I, I definitely, and Rob could vouch for me here, I mean, things needed to change, kind of like you were talking about high schools and the bookends. Things need to change for these, these poor students that really need help, and that needs to be identified and gone. So, thanks.
All in favor of the early childhood special education, special school district agreement? Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hear none, motion passed.
Thank you.
Very welcome. Thank you. Dr. Bland and Dr. Forbes, we're going to give us an update on the international, international Baccarat program application process. And this is just for board information.
Good evening. I'd ask Dr. Crowley, principal at McLaurin North High School, and Dr. Forbes to join me with the update, because they have worked tirelessly with the McLaurin North staff on completing the candidacy application for IB. So at this time, I am going to ask Dr. Crowley to share the awesome news slash update.
And I'll apologize, but I'll have to stay on script, because this is scripted from IB. Hello, thank you. The application for candidacy for the diploma program at McLaurin North High School has been approved as of the 1st of November 2017. The candidacy period will formally begin on March 1st, 2018. McLaurin North High School is a candidate school for the diploma program. This school is pursuing authorization as an IB World School. IB World Schools share a common philosophy, a commitment to high-quality, challenging, international education that we believe is important for our students. Only schools authorized by the IB organization can offer any of its four academic programs, the primary years program, the middle years program, the diploma program, which is the one we're pursuing, or the career-related program. Candidate status gives no guarantee that authorization will be granted. And that's our statement from the IB organization.
And I would just like to say, this is the second phase of the application process. As I stated earlier, Dr. Crowley and Dr. Forbes and his teachers at McLaurin North have worked extremely hard to get to this point. It is a very rigorous application process, and IB is very selective in who they welcome into their academic circle. And in the metropolitan area, we only have two high schools, Lindbergh High School and Metro High School at this time, who have IB in their schools. So I just want to publicly thank Dr. Crowley and Dr. Forbes for their hard work.
Do you have any questions about it?
So, I just wanted to give Dr. Forbes a chance to say a word or two. I know he's.
He's just anxious.
If there's any questions, I'll be glad to take them. I think what I'm most, not surprised, but one of the things that strikes me about the IB is they have these, they have hundreds of rubrics, scoring guides. And basically, when you send whatever they are looking at, they just get out the scoring guide and see if you meet the criteria. If you meet the criteria, you take the next step. You don't meet the criteria, mm, try again. So it really is a standards-based, or they call it, they have a different name for it, but that's. It's a standards approach. If you meet the standard, you're in. You don't meet the standard, you get another chance, but we want you to meet this standard. And the same is true when the classes will be taught, the IB classes will be taught. Teachers are given freedom, but they must, they must teach these thinking skills. And there's a big emphasis on thinking skills. Not that there's no content, there's content. There's a strong amount of content. But there is this emphasis on really, on these depth of knowledge, thinking, on evaluation, and looking at things from a lot of different perspectives. So that's what I'd say.
So, you know, I got to say something. I am, like, elated, right? Like, I am, this is just amazing, right? Because I said a minute ago, if you remember back in the comments, that high school redesign, this is just a piece of it. I don't know if people get how huge this is, right? So we still have another step to go through, but to get through the first door means, hey, we're seriously considering the full program. It would take us a couple of years anyway to get students through, because we've got a lot of work to do with teachers and all, but the folks at North, Dr. Bland, Dr. Crowley, you know, I tell you what, they have, Dr. Forbes has done a yeoman's job at putting together a solid application. They've reached out to people around the country. But let me just tell you that, having been a principal of an IB full diploma high school, I saw in some of the classes when I was a high school principal, when I was going to classes and watched some of the work going on with students in IB program, that students were doing the kinds of thinking and writing that I didn't do until I got to graduate school, in a master's level program. I say that to say that to be able to provide that kind of quality for a child, giving teachers tools they need to make sure that happens, that's what it's going to take to redesign the way in which we do high school work. And let me tell you that, when I was, and that went too long ago, every one of my students at high school, at high school, I was a principal of Hunt High School in, what's it, North Carolina, every last one of the students who graduated with a diploma, I would argue, I would say 99%, maybe 100, got their first choice of college. And most of them wanted to go to Carolina, you know, Chapel Hill. But the students were absolutely ready. This kind of work as a piece that will transform the way we do business and third floor. So, let's give this community a round of applause, y'all. I'm telling you. There's so much more to do, but I'm telling you, it's these kinds of things that we can, you know, continue to strengthen our educational system. Because people want great schools, not just good, people want great schools. When my son, they want great schools, so that when they're done, they have choices. And access to at least the middle class, if not more. And an education does that. Were you good for me? So thank you all, let's give them a round of applause, too. They did a great job.
What's the timeline?
Great question. You want to take that over? I actually prepared for a question, wait. So, what that means for us now is, when we start the candidacy phase, it's about a two-year process from here to get through the next application for them, to receive full authorization. So it's a two-year process. Well, as you remember, we had already sent some teachers this past summer, from initial training, as well as myself, Dr. Bland, and Dr. Forbes. We now need to figure out, within our building, starting to put together an IB design team of teachers, and myself and Dr. Forbes, around next stages. Who would be the next group of teachers for the summer of 2018? And then the summer of 2019, we need to get off the training, as well as looking at all the curriculum. One thing that was in the IB memo, giving us the good news, was now we have full access to the curriculum via online, to see what we need to do as in the curriculum building components of this. So that'll be huge as well. And I would say another huge component of this is going to be not just the internal IB design team at the school, is we need to figure out a great mechanism for community impairment, parent input and involvement along the way.
So, graduating class, what graduating class are you guys looking to start with?
Correct me if I'm wrong, Dr. Forbes, it would be 2021.
I wish I could get it done faster.
I do want it, so.
Any other questions?
Congratulations.
Mr. Hampton has some news about library cards.
Good evening, board. The St. Louis County Library is offering free all-access library cards to district students through its Connect Ed Library Card Challenge. Through this program, all district students will have access to the county's library, the county library's extensive collection of books and other materials, as well as access to the library's online resources. Parents may choose to opt out of the program if they have concerns about the district sharing basic student information with the library. However, administration believes the county library is a trusted partner, and the benefits from this program will include students reading more at higher levels due to the increased access. So this is just another piece of our overall approach to giving kids more access to reading, more access to books, and to free opportunity. I had an email today, someone said, aren't library cards free anyway? And, you know, I said yes, but we emphasize that because people always think there's no free lunch, and so we want people to know there's no strings attached to it.
If I remember correctly, Ferguson can't use the Forest Library or the county libraries because of our taxing district, so this is really great, I really hope that happens.
So, how will we, how will we notify parents? What does the roadmap look like?
Parents have received an email asking them to opt out, and then we'll send our list to the library, and they will get those cards out to us very soon. We're still working through some pieces about ID numbers and things like that, just to make it easier for our teacher, our librarians, our teachers.
Thank you. That was just for board information. College Planning Resources.
Good evening, board. So, last month, at the, at the board meeting, we had a conversation, and there was a parent who was asking for more access to information about college for not only his family and his daughter, but for others. And then after conversations with a couple of board members, we took the direction that was given to us, and we beefed up our college prep information that's on the website. And so I just want to give you a very quick, kind of where people can find this. We know that when people go to a website, the way that you approach the website may be different from the way that you navigate the website, and so we've tried to make sure that it's very clear. So if you look at the, this is called the channel bar here, and there is a section called Students and Parents. Located under that section, as well as in the students section here, why is that not? This is cached with the old information on here, and we didn't get a chance to go through and do this. Let me see if it'll reload with the new information. There we go. So, in the, in the students section here, and in the parents section here, as well as under departments, under counseling, there are, there is a link. What we've also done is gone to each of the secondary school websites, as well as these alternative program websites. So even a parent at, let's say Ferguson Middle School, can go to the Ferguson Middle website, because that might be more familiar with them. And they can come to the parents section, click College Planning Resources, and they'll see this whole section here. Under this are several items. There is ACT, a link to ACT information, and that will take you out to this website, which has this interactive calendar with steps that parents should be taking at different times of the year. There is also information about college admissions requirements. And so what we have done at the Dr. Davis direction is to go through, and we'll continue to add to this, but for a parent whose child would really like to go to Mizzou, they can click here, and it will take them out to the Mizzou admissions website, so that it's very clear there what the requirements are at Mizzou. Also, oops. Let's see if we can get back there. There is also information about college sports eligibility, so if a parent or a student has some athletic prowess and is thinking about becoming a student athlete, they can click here, and it will give them information about the requirements to play Division I sports. We also have that for Division II sports, and also for NAIA as well. There are links to our course catalogs, also known as College and Career Planning Guides, and then a link to several different scholarships. And then one last exciting piece that's on here now, and that's a link to the Common Application. So, those college applications can be huge and time-consuming, and so the Common Application, when a student fills that out, there are over 700 colleges and universities who accept that Common Application. And there is also an HBCU Common Application, so that students who are interested in applying to a historically black college or university can click that link and go out and fill a Common Application that's recognized by HBCUs. We'll continue to beef this up and add a lot more information to it over time, but we feel like this is a great start on some resources to help families who, maybe it's the first time that someone in their family has. the first time that someone in their family has pursued a college, pursued a college opportunity, or even, you know, we're on thinking about number three at our house and still, we don't know it all, and so, it's good for parents to have more access to more So, this is just also for your information too, but I'll be glad to answer any questions.
Great work.
Thank you. Thank you.
Go ahead.
I was waiting.
No, and it doesn't have anything to do with, it was actually almost going back to the public comment. Is there a way that we can livestream?
So, it takes money, but yes, there is, and we can pursue that. It's something that we haven't done in the past. We've, you know, as we've gone to some of the electronic communications that we're using for things this year, we've saved some money on printing, and so, you know, we've been thinking about that might be a possibility. And we've also had some conversations as we think about moving into the new boardroom. We're looking at what will the audio requirements be in there, will the other tech requirements be in there? And it may be that we have to wait till that point to really be able to do it. It's awkward in here, and Brandon does a great job, but it takes time to go through and, and go through and edit, as opposed to having a live video switcher and doing that. I did look after that comment, and I found that there were some videos that weren't showing up, and actually went in and changed some settings, and so, I think you should be able to see those now, and I'm sorry, they're, they're just an error in the settings there, so. But livestreaming would certainly give more people more access, and those files, you know, are stored online too, so people could see them afterwards.
Okay, so Kevin, Kevin Rehm.
Sure.
Lauren is in some sort of Humso College Prep deal on the weekend? You guys know about that reason?
I thought you did.
Yeah, and it's really, we went in there not, you know, wow, that's really, really neat, especially the component where the parent goes, I think, one of the weekend mornings, and it's all about the parent angle on the college prep, and wow, I think Susan comes back with more notes than Lauren, but yeah, I, because Lauren recognized tons and tons of kids, and I don't know how they select their schools, but I think a lot of them do the first floor schools, but it was a really good deal. I don't know, what do you think of it?
Well, I mean, I actually, we have a really good relationship with our school, with Tom George, and even the College of Education, in fact, we're working closely now, looking at our early college. So, you know, North presented a minute ago around IB, but we're also working on some specialized programs, particularly MSB, looking at early college there, and then looking at the PLTW cohort model at AP at McCour. McCour's already started with their freshman academy, so we're trying to make sure we have a variety of programs and be experts at particular schools, so that a child who wants to go to college, so here's what we, I probably really wish, I don't know who's gonna go to college.
Sure.
I'm not gonna discourage any child from going, but here's what I believe, right? I believe that if my son is prepared to go to the Marines, and he's done the whole about doing that, and on graduation day, he says, "Dad, I wanna go to Mizzou." If there's space available at Mizzou, he should be able to get in without having to take any more classes, without having to do anything else but apply, right? Having done all the other stuff, so that he's ready for that. And so, to me, that's the success marker of having done a great job at preparing every child for a successful future. And so, this program, the bridge program at our school and other programs, where it exposes students to college opportunities, I think are paramount to get them ready. And we're just putting it out there here. The other thing is also the athletes, all right? Because so many kids, and I think some of you probably have heard this, so many students wanna go into NFL or NBA or whatever the case is, and they don't even have the classes to get into Division I school where they wanna go, where they graduate, they wanna go. I don't want a child to get to their senior year and graduating and say, "I wanna go to LSU," for example, but then looks, we look at the transfer, and they, you know, can't go there, probably have to go to a junior college, right? So, you know, it's putting information out there, having the conversation publicly all the time, so that students know, "Wait a minute, what do I need to do to prepare for that? What does that path look like?" Because I'm first-generation college, so it took a lot of my own work and my grandma's work to say, "Listen, you know, I don't know what to do, but, you know, ask some questions, figure it out. We need to take the guesswork out of it, so we can open up the door to more kids, I don't care what color they are, going to college, certainly have access to a good life," so yeah.
Well, so, so you approve or you like the?
Well, I know, that's the long answer, but it's a good question.
Now, Courtney, I don't know if you heard the fella after the meeting, but he was talking about how he was helping other parents, like in his house. And I don't, again, I don't know, we may already do this, but you know, it'd be neat to kinda have something, like I said, Susan's getting almost as much or more than Lauren is out of this, so I wonder, there's something like that we help parents, like?
There's a program that is, it's actually now a nonprofit organization, organized by parents where my kids are in school, and so, we've reached out to them, we're trying to work on that as positive as parents helping other parents.
Well, that's the thing, I'm not even talking about holding their hand through the whole system, but just kinda giving them a good toolbox to get started, you know? Because sometimes I think you're just, as this gentleman was describing, he was kinda teaching other parents just to get them off the block, not, you know, and it's really, really, it was awesome, so.
Yep, I think using the parent board is a great place there, but I encourage, you know, any parent, I really want parents to come and be a part of the Parent Advisory Council. We have some really great parents, and it's been consistent with the parents who've been coming, and every time I get an opportunity, I invite parents to come. And the only thing you need to do is give me your email or some contact information, and Kevin and Vicki, they reach out, the parents, I would love to have a thousand parents, that we'd have to find a bigger place, you know, just give them access to the information.
Good job. Thank you very much. Thank you. And we'll have, Mr. Boye will come up.
Good evening. I am bringing back a recommendation regarding the temporary suspension of district policy 1011 regarding board approval for super intense recommendation for hire. This would be limited to education support personnel, specifically as we look at custodians, but also in trying to provide some flexibility for the hiring of our drivers and our food service workers. It would only be for the 2017, 2018 school year, and only after the candidates have passed a full background check. I'd also like to state that these candidates are already coming in as at-will employees, so there could be any number of reasons outside of just not passing probationary period for which they could be dismissed.
I need a motion to suspend District Policy 1011 and adopting the allowance of support personnel candidates.
So moved.
Any discussion?
No, she's for the school year, so.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, or anybody who, you're none? Motion passed.
Thank you.
Mr. Hampton, back up again.
Good evening, Board. The FFSD board retreats have been designed to inform and empower the board members to lead transformation in our district. Policy work is one of the most important responsibilities of a school board. Our last retreat held on Saturday, March 11th, 2017, was designed to craft an equity resolution as a statement of this board's commitment to equity throughout this district. Our next retreat should consider how looking through an equity lens when crafting and revising policy will ensure intergenerational equity for our students for years to come. Defining equity in Ferguson-Floreson and linking this thinking to our district core values will set the stage for our school district to take a unique and pioneering stand, providing all children with more than just a high school diploma, but a world-class education. Administration would like the board to decide upon a date for the next retreat, appoint a retreat committee of the board, and begin the planning and development process for a successful and impactful retreat.
So, this is a little bit different, because I know normally this doesn't come before us for an action item to be moved. So, we can change this to board information?
Yeah, it should prevent for information, I didn't realize the action.
All right, because I like, you know, it's very difficult for all of us to look at our calendars and try to pick a date, and then, but, yeah, so we're gonna change this from board action just to board information.
Can we add items to this retreat? Or is it just?
I'm reluctant to add items to the retreat, because normally the retreats last a long time. Let's just call it a meeting, but not a retreat, because we're not at a spa. What did you have in mind?
I had before, and I can't think what it is. I hope there are a couple.
Okay, so, now, you talked about the organizational health. Now, for those that don't know, we had contracted with outside group to come in and evaluate the organizational health of our entire school district. This was done last school year, and I know we've been trying to have a meeting to talk about those particular results. Is that what you want to do with this one? What's the gentleman's name? There's two of them.
Marvin and Leon.
Yeah. So, is that what you want to bring him in for this particular?
So, Marvin and Leon, we need about three to four hours of your time to go through the data. I think that's really, really important. Principals have been going through the data, using it, because what has happened is, so, faculty from staffs at schools have done the survey as well, so they've gotten some organizational data, you know, that sort of juxtaposes or compares principals' thinking to the thinking of the folks in the school. So, the board hasn't gone through that yet, though, and, and I need you to, because that's really, really important. The retreat, though, is a little different, and, you know, so, I don't think Ms. Harge or Ms. Ponder has had an opportunity to go through a retreat like we've done in the past, and there's a lot of planning, so that those, you know, the first retreat we had, you remember, we had folks doing some interviews and really getting a good deep sense of what board, what the board wanted to have discussions on. And so, what Lesley's talking about there, I think that is the part that I think is critical for us to do.
For the board goals and future of the school district. Yeah, but, so we're talking multiple retreats.
We're talking about one retreat and then a meeting.
Okay.
All right. Did you say a three-hour meeting?
Yeah.
Three-ish, four-ish.
Well, yeah, it could be, for the retreat, it could be two days.
Right.
So, the retreat, and if you notice that the retreats we had, you know, we've had it off the campus, other than the last one in March of this year, it was no cost to the district, but that Friday night and that Saturday, I think are really important, because we haven't had one like that in a while, and I really need the board.
Are we paying somebody to come in and work with us, or is it just our talent?
So, Bob and Larry, we paid Larry once. Every other retriever had, they've done it at no cost. So, this one, I would like for Bob, Peterkin, and Larry leverage to help lead that. Say it again. Yeah, so, the two of them haven't had an opportunity to go through, so I would like to have them as a part of that, which is something I brought to the board last year, but we just haven't done it.
All right, and that's the, this is what you're talking about?
Yes.
Okay, and that's where him and I were going back and forth, regards to that meeting of using the outside group to come in and coordinate this, because my concern was that when we was talking about equity in our school district, we're talking about, you know, district goals in itself, I felt those are more internal things that I felt more comfortable having our leadership, leadership team working with the board on. It's a grander view, something, maybe, you know, I understand we bring in professional development people outside to do it, but I think in this particular case, we already have the data, we already have the plan, we already have the commitment from the board on the equity level, because we're the ones that say, "Let's do the resolution, let's get it out there, let's show everybody our commitment, and let's identify the barriers." One of the reasons last meeting, when we were talking about our attendance was so bad, and we're like, "Okay, why is our attendance so bad? Is it transportation? I don't know, let's find out." So, we identified transportation is not a problem for barriers, okay? We eliminated that one off the table, what are the other ones? I'm just not so sure unless Dr. Davis can convince me of why we need outside group to identify those things.
Well, you know, you got two new members. One, and you know, every board, especially in the state of Missouri, because every year you have new board members, you know, every, at least once a year, boards need to come together and have these discussions, because the goals you're talking about, the two of them have had no input on it. And you have to do that, because it's just equitable voice for one, and for two, you need to make sure that we are representing the, all the constituents that you all represent.
I'm not saying not have a meeting, we're gonna have a meeting, no, we're going to.
I think it's just about having an outside person. He needs to, again, they wanna, they want you to be able to convince them why we need an outside person to facilitate the group, so.
So, if you, so.
Give us a concrete cause to that.
And timing is everything, so, you know, I would think that you definitely wanna have this retreat like after the elections in April. Oh, yeah. Then you can bring all your new board members if you have them.
Dr. Davis, I think the retreat last year was in downtown.
See, you can't count her now, she's been there.
Yes, so you can go there, okay.
Now, you can spend some alone time with Jessica.
I don't want to bring anybody in, I think we need to use our talent, I, I don't think it's worth 30,000, and that's about what.
Well, it didn't cost 30,000, 25. No, it didn't cost that either.
Well, it was close last time, those were some numbers that I heard last time, I just would rather we do, I'm in agreement with doing retreats, but I think we need to do it ourselves and not hire people, bringing in.
Yeah, so, so let me be clear, we've only paid somebody one time, the other times we've had, they did it at no cost. So, even if, you know, we don't bring anybody else in, I absolutely think we have to continue to go deep around the work we've been doing. But here's the other part too, having external people helps to get out some of those, you know, core beliefs that board members have, and so, I think that's critical, you know, when you have those conversations with people, to get an objective view, so.
So, it takes strangers to get core beliefs out of us? You're saying? That's definitely, unless I heard wrong.
I think people wanna come back to us, we'll probably comment.
You know, I'm like, I always.
And you know, how much deeper do we wanna go? You got your team, and how many you're doing awesome stuff, and.
So, you love me.
And I love you, so let's just keep. Not going with what we're doing, we don't need to go any deeper. Like, any deeper, I might drown, you know? I mean.
Because one of the challenges that we did have, and I'll admit this is why, one of the reasons I was reluctant, is that they have like three dates they can do, period, okay? And so, often, not all seven of us are there. You know, it's hard enough to try to schedule a meeting for all of us to be there, but then we're using an outside company that only gives us, you know, three dates to choose from, you know, then it just delays it. It seems like, you know, something, as pressing as this, and would you say March is when we met, that one Saturday, we spent all day here, and we agreed that we're gonna have a resolution, and we were excited and pumped, and we thought it'd be in the next board meeting, and we'd come out with balloons and fireworks, and there hasn't been any of that, and we lost, well, I think, a lot of momentum coming out of that. It's honestly, for me, it was frustrating, because we felt like, or I felt like, we spent a Saturday away from our family, when we didn't need to spend that Saturday away from the family, when we could've waited six or seven months to do it, and I don't wanna go through that.
So, you're saying you don't want a retreat?
No, I want to, but I want results, you know, just like this whole organizational health, that when we had, when we paid them what, $60,000 to do it, and then you guys did it, and then we're told that, "Well, the data really isn't sufficient, so we can't really use the data, so we may have to do it again." Yeah, what were you in the meeting when they talked about that?
I think it was like, we can't trust the first set of data to make changes.
But we never got the first set of data.
We never had that conversation.
But when he gave that presentation, it was late in the meeting, and I did stay awake for it, and my one question was, "How long would this take?" And I think he said four to six months, maybe, and that's been a while, and, yeah, we should at least have, and, 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 and I ask, so if you are going to present a format, it needs to be delivered in that format, and I ask, you can, you guys get paid to look through the volumes of numbers, but I want that. want that format of these schools, these schools, and that's what he said, and they said. And they said, "That would be no problem." So really, I see it as a thing, like everything else we do, that if we want more information, we can dive deeper into it, but that's really your team's job to dive deep into it. We need that to be a little, you know, a half-hour presentation, which would probably, with discussion, lead to an hour and a half, but three hours with the numbers, I, I, that's for me.
I'll do, I'll take care of it. I'll tell you that, I'll take care of it.
And we're doing great things. I mean, you know, what, what, this...
I just want to make sure, I just want to make sure that the board stays informed, community stays informed. I think the critical pieces, and, you know, folks talk about transparency, and making sure that, you know, we are letting people know what we're doing, that is new bat yet. So, absolutely.
So we'll organize a meeting, a mini-retreat for the organizational health portion of that report, correct? Is what the intentions are.
No, that was a meeting, you said, wasn't it?
That'll be a meeting.
That's a meeting.
A three or four-hour meeting.
I'm trying to get it down to a holiday meeting.
Okay. But then we are going to be scheduling a retreat.
So I'll put it on CD, and then CD, CD. So I'll reach out to Marvin and Leon, and, because they're pretty much open with giving that report to the board.
Well, I thought they'd sent, like, four dates.
He called today and said he would make himself any time.
Okay. All right, because one of them was that, like Connie said, she's not available any Saturday in the month of November, and they were heading into, you know, the extended holiday season, so when are we looking to do this two-night, two-day retreat?
So the, the deeper one would be in the new year, I would think, January, February. The one with Marvin and Leon is just a couple of hours, are they going over the results of the report?
So can that be on a Wednesday night?
Could be on the 29th, when we're going to meet anyways.
Sure.
And do it then.
Absolutely.
Okay. So we knock that one out, and then we can go ahead and schedule the retreat into the month of January, and then we can discuss how we're going to work that. But, so you're asking for three members to be on the retreat committee? Is that what, the number of people you'd like to...
At least.
At least? Well, let's raise the number. All right. I need three people who want to be on this retreat committee. So I got Leslie, Jessica, and Connie. First three, huh? Too late? Too late?
I did it last time.
I did, okay. All right, so you three will then coordinate with Dr. Davis and his team, working through the dates and things like that, so.
That'll be fun.
Just plan on, let's target sometime in January, you know, to...
So are we going free Marvin and Leon, can we do a beach?
I tried that already.
No.
Laura says yes.
On two, three.
Anything else with that?
No, sir.
All right, so we'll, we'll work out those details as we move along here, then. All right, thank you.
I'm going to adjourn.
Here we go, new business, meeting adjourned.